It's 7:20, welcome to the Monday, January 9th Board Selective Meeting. It's mostly at 7:30 but 7:20 it calls me in our. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance is to apply the United States of America to the great police system, on which we are the citizens of the community. Please remain standing for more than silence. This past week, during the passing of Robert Brown, this was a farm dedicated to helping the neighborhood any way he could. Thank you.
If I could just introduce, I'm not sure if people at homework that can hear why that moment of silence was, so I don't know if you want to repeat that or?
Yes, the moment of silence was for Robert Brown. He was a volunteer senior senator and long did come in many ways. We appreciate his service. I understand that with all his good family and friends. Next on the agenda is the Reorganization and Efficiency Grant Award. This is the result of the county building becoming the Community Compact Town. And the town was awarded $30,000 to the grant, Creating Compact Efficiency and Realization of Grant Programs. Community Compact Cabinet Program focused on best practices and IP incentives. Attached to our packet here, we have documentation to complete all the cabinet program.
Yes, yes. I think it's really exciting there. This is one of, actually, this is our third rate that we're looking at. One, we've been able to obtain one for information technology. We've also been able to attain one for financial management practices and best practices for capital planning. And this would be the third one, which is a brand-new program that, in particular, Lieutenant Governor's Office was pushing for, and we were one of only 17 that actually obtained this grant. We were asking for more money as a regional partnership with the town of Oxbridge, and it has to do with shared planning services that we're going to be looking at. And I know our new planner is very excited in hopes that we can apply some of this to our finalizing our master plan. So I want to thank the board for having entertained the application, which I brought to you previously. And for the first round, we were successful, and I know that it'll be a great thing for the town going forward.
Thank you. See, this kind of overfield. Need to cut the phone books there. Next on the agenda is the minutes of the meeting, December 19th. Mrs. Callahan, I only have one correction. It's on the word, change of the word, K-H-T-U, on the whole business hazardous mitigation, hazard mitigation.
Okay.
The word, the last thing should be changed from excavation to evacuation.
Evacuation. That's what you get for a special. It automatically defaults to that. I should have looked at it a little bit more carefully. I can make that change.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of December 19th with the amendment made.
You hear a second?
I think you have the only one who can second.
I'll second.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand.
Gotcha.
The next on the agenda is the appointment of Roy Deon, who's promoted to private lieutenant effective, effective December 18th. In addition to that, Mr. Steve Furnell was reappointed as Deputy Chief. You don't include him, do you?
I think it's just a...
A vote to accept the chief's.
Yep, he's a strong, it's, we have a strong chief, a fire chief under 46.
This is Roy Deon's promotion.
Right.
Lieutenant.
I don't think we have to, we don't make that. He, he does his appointments. We just get notified of them. But it's happy to see that his promotion for Roy.
Yeah, congratulations to Roy. Senior Senator, Council on Aging, gift, check of $5,000, I'm sorry, $500 on behalf of the town, the senior senator. And this is the result of fundraising event. So I agree with you, we accept the donation, my gift, $500.
Motion to accept $500 from Mark C. Duffy for the event held at Valley Park.
Serving, roll in second. Parks and Recreation, I'd like to invite Mr. Kevin to the table to discuss proposal for community garden.
Hi guys, how are you?
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi Dan.
Thank you. Couple things before we go on to the community garden, I want to get an update on the playground. The playground is in town, actually, and it's in storage, so it's repurchased. It's just great news, it's great news. I want to thank a couple people first before we go forward. Brian Malley and his group, they assisted with the motor vehicle truck and storing in the containers. Chief Landry actually coordinated that for us. And the container company is Go Mini Storage on Lincoln Street. And they stepped up and assisted us storing that for us. So great things, yeah, really a lot of help around to make this happen for us. But I also, once again, want to step out and just thank the donor, our donor, our daughter's daughter, who just, you know, gives this great gift. I'm so thankful for that. I know as the town, speaking for on behalf of the town, the selective, so it's a great thing.
We're talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
Tens of thousands of dollars, yep.
It's a very big gift, and playground equipment is extremely expensive, so we really appreciate that.
It's awesome, it's just great news. I also want to update, I did speak with the superintendent and invited him of everything going on and the update, the latest updates. And of course, he reached out and let me know if any way he needed to support us or anybody. I did mention about volunteers as we get into the spring, maybe the National Art Society or some groups of kids come down to help us with the efforts in the spring. That's just future discussion with the superintendent, he thinks that's a great idea. I know that I can give a handful of people, some sports team kids that could come down and help us along with several volunteers.
Kevin, you may want to reach out to the Valley Tech. I mean, they might have programs where they need community service hours, and those children from the community might be able to help us out too.
I did receive a letter from them last year, actually, for that particular, for community service.
Yeah.
And I did leave a message with the Assistant Principal, Edward Evans, this week. And I'll get back with him and, you know, you want to bury it?
Yeah.
It'd be a great thing. To our volunteers. Last thing on that is to, I got to reach out sometime in February to the manufacturer of the playground. They were also, I believe, supporters with a foreman to help us build the playground. So I'll reach out to the donor, reach out to the manufacturer, get some dialogue going on, get things going, see exactly what he needs from us to get things moving in the spring. I'm sure he's done this, you know, hundreds of times.
Yeah.
He has schedules, so that'll be another update on the table. I need some news.
Very good.
All right. Secondly, the community garden, which is new news for us again. A gentleman named Mark Robinson approached the Parks and Recreation Committee about an idea for a community garden. Very enthusiastic, says he can get a lot of people who knows to participate. And so one of the things we did ask him to do was to come up with a budget and schedule. Does everyone have a copy?
Yes.
Okay. I won't go through the entire thing, but he put a lot of hard work and effort into the schedule. I believe he also created a Facebook page. What else did he do? He posted some communication letters throughout the town, all area, for volunteers and left his phone number. I thought it was a great effort by this gentleman for getting us started on something good for this program. We also talked about a location initially, and I'll take any feedback, but just talking to the chief in Carr, Varano, and we talked about putting it behind a police station. Because we really, we really need what that is, we need water. We need a source of water. And behind there is a good start, at least a start of this program. And if people bring their kids, I mean, for the playground while they work in the garden, it's just some different things to them. Again, it's not, that's not in stone, we won't take any feedback, many other locations anybody will think of to start, but I think you could start there.
There'll be ample parking.
There definitely be ample parking. We're also going to take a visit out to Oxbridge.
Who's going to answer?
We did talk about that.
Done.
And we'll reach out and find the contact personnel there and see how their initial program is run, speeds, basically, you know, their processes.
Is that the one that's like up in the hill?
Yes. It's quite extensive. You started out small, and that's one thing you might want to consider as you go.
I drove by there, I had to bring a friend to the barn, there's a horse barn across the street almost, and I saw it, and I was like, holy cow, I didn't even know this was in Oxbridge, but it was amazing. And there was people there working, and they get their own plots, and there's that whole piece of it. So, and it really took off. It started out, you know, quite like this, and they were really amazed in that people liked doing it, even though they could, some people could even garden, their own gardens at home or their own land. They liked the ability to go out and be part of this, for sure.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
I think it's great.
Yeah, I use a very complimentist gentleman again for his efforts. I think he's done a really good job, put together a lot of things behind the scenes. It's that I did ask him, I said, if you really want to get this going, will you be able to come and show me the budget? And he did. Put all these numbers together, looking at them all just quickly, it's about $1,200 to get things started. I think if I could incorporate something to get that started, and then we could work on a plan for, you know, the fees or something like that, be able to just roll itself, you know, pay for itself in the future. I was looking at a couple of the items on there, he had some delivery charges, but I think we could resolve those through the hiring of, you know, the dump trucks and whatever we could do to...
Is Parks and Recreation still operating at a $500 budget?
No.
What are you guys at?
I think it's about $2,000.
$2,000?
Yeah. I think we're at that, but we had some other things that we're doing, small things, but definitely could contribute to that as well.
Okay.
We're going to put together a plan in February, submit a budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. Very good.
You guys have been busy.
Very excited.
Yeah, it's very exciting, very exciting. Instead of being just a, you can't take up, you know, there's a lot of new news.
Couple things going on.
It's good stuff.
Whatever, do you need anything from us?
Money, would be good, yeah.
You have some money?
No.
Media selection of Lee and for that, sorry.
Correct. Like I said, we're looking at the officials plot the land for the garden, and like I said, any future thoughts or ideas, I'll return to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you been in touch with Lisa, with the list of town-owned properties? We have a list of town-owned properties.
Okay.
That might be a starting place?
Sure.
To look at. Some are, you know, woods, and others are, might be smaller and might be walking news. If I would look at that list, I think Lisa has that, because it's been given to us in the past, I don't know where mine is off the top of my head, but that might be a help for...
It's a treasure.
Treasury, yes.
It's actually been modified because we had other properties that may come in, so it would be good to take a look.
Sure.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Public forum, anyone in the public forum? We have received a letter from Michelle Duman. She's attended for reservations, Van Dravitt Senior Center. I think we need a board, the Council on Aging, been notified by letter.
Do I make a motion to accept the resignation of Michelle Duman as Van Dravitt for the Millville Senior Center with regret?
Second. Roll.
Aye.
Please.
And we'll get her letter out. Thank you for your time. Yes, thank you.
We also have a request that's been fulfilled from the Economic Beverage Control Commission to provide annual license for local establishments. That's what I'm taking care of.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that you had seen what was submitted, and it's a regulatory requirement, so that has been...
To you back.
Yes. Purpose of sharing this with you, Mr. Chairman, and the board, was, I think it's always important, since we're doing so much, you know, close partnership with the school, for us, it's worth every penny going forward, and it just so happens to be that time of year, so I thought I would do that in the packet.
The quarterly bill at school, February 1st, is $85,507. National grid, if this happens on a regular basis, they notify us of their pest control defoliation, stuff with problems, and that, that happens, I believe, in the town between January 30th and always, and the 7th, 31st, and 7th. The list, the treatments will be applied, and it can be timed to a year, this is the common practice, and it happens every year.
Can we have this just posted to cable or posted on...
I was actually going to say, if there was any residents that wanted to see that, but I, I think that the actual month, the months that they, the quarterlies that they do certain type of things, see, that would be a great idea, I think we could...
Or at least just a link to a website where they could get more information, because I know, you know, people who might live along the power line with the pesticides and herbicides.
If you...
Yeah, I'd put it on the website, I'd put it under a couple boards that I think are relevant, and then that would be helpful, I can move on that.
Correspondents from D and P, relative to Warfaw, Pauling, Samling, regards the elementary school, the providing schedule, providing testing for all schools here. And not the least, water solutions, and provided for, release findings, everything, it's coming. Deteriorated bacteria was, well, certainly perhaps, a few.
The only reason we put that in is because we had that one...
Flip.
Flip last spring, and, you know, it was coming to the end of the year, and since that time, we've been, you know, in compliance, and I think that's important for both parents and for the reports of health and everybody else to know.
MMA, next on the agenda is the MMA Annual Business Meeting with the officials. That occurs...
On the Saturday, January 21st, and the reason why I put this in your packet is the MMA conference goes both January 20th and the 21st, but basically, if designated official of the board, meaning the chairman of the board, is not able to attend the MMA Annual Business Meeting, to be able to vote on their agenda, and some of the things that they may be putting forward for the schedule of the upcoming year, and they request that someone else gets appointed, and have to have a written authorization to do that. So I don't know, you don't have to make this decision tonight, well, yes, I'm next in the whole week, it'll be the 23rd, but if you want to think about it, I thought it was important to just put it out to you.
Is there any person here that is attending? I'm not.
Okay.
So, you're not either. I mean, if someone from our community was attending, I don't mind authorizing, but if no one had plans on going, then...
I could check with the selectman who's not here to find out if he would be planning to do it. I know that I'm planning to try to make some of the workshops with some of the department heads, in, you know, whether I...
Yeah, yeah.
For the Saturday morning Annual Business Meeting, I haven't made that determination yet, but if you would like me to do that, I certainly can do that, but I can wait and see if that's good.
An hour and a half meeting, I'm not overly concerned about levels.
No, they're all, we really don't have... We have participated.
Okay.
We have participated in the Massachusetts Selectment Association, attended most of the most of the meetings. Take their small family.
Okay. All right, thanks for that clarification.
Next on the agenda is the abandoned housing initiative by Mike Monica, Assistant Attorney General.
Mr. Chairman, I've asked Monica to actually come before your board. We've talked about this abandoned housing initiative, it is a grant program that we had on our agenda. I had indulged the board with some information, but there's obviously a lot more information that would be important to our board going forward. Monica is going to speak to this particular initiative that comes out of the Attorney General's Office. It is to really look at helping communities address blighted and abandoned properties. So with that, I would like to ask me to come up. Oh, the power, yes.
Yeah, we can move out there.
Yeah, we'll move out there, so we can see.
This, this should do it, right? Get this done. Thank you. Maybe my...
Just so that it picks up.
Does that work?
Yep.
All right. Hold that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll just stand there, my shadow will be cast over there. So, good evening, everybody, I'm Monica Pasto, I'm with the Attorney General's Office in our abandoned housing initiative. So I'll give you a brief overview of our program, and at the end, I'll also talk about our Strategic Demolition Fund, which I know has been flagged as something you may be interested in as well. And I apologize for the 2016, we're, we're not caught up with 2017 yet. So just really briefly legal disclaimer, because our office is a bunch of attorneys, this is just a synopsis of our program, it's not legal advice about the statutes or anything like that. So a really quick overview of our program, we were, started in 2008, 2009, right around the height of the foreclosure crisis. And we started with a grant from the federal government and could target bank-owned properties only. So that was our first, sort of the first steps we took as an office to help municipalities combat blight throughout the Commonwealth. In 2000, this is a map of 2009, the communities we served in 2009, because of our funding, we focused on, we could focus on only targeted neighborhoods and municipalities throughout the Commonwealth, so we weren't able to, to spread throughout the Commonwealth at that time because of the funding restrictions. In 2011, this was an important year for our program, it was when our federal funding ran out, and we actually decided to, to take the program in-house and fund it through our office itself, which allowed us to work with municipalities, with any municipality throughout the Commonwealth, and also allowed us to target properties beyond bank-owned So this is a map of our community partners as of the end of 2016. You can see from the previous maps up to this map, we've, we've managed to work with a lot more municipalities and be useful throughout much more parts of the Commonwealth than we were at the beginning of our program. We are currently working in 109 municipalities, we've had 1,700 referrals since 2008, and we have about 400 active cases right now. We have, can you go back one? The stars are where we have offices and also where we have attorneys, so we spread our attorneys out throughout the, throughout the Commonwealth, and it allows us to be present at things like this, and also to just be able to be active in the communities we serve. So I serve out of our Worcester office, and I work in all of central Massachusetts. So this is a heat map of the Commonwealth, showing foreclosures throughout Massachusetts. This is an example of some of the resources we have available to our office that we're able to use to help municipalities. So we've often found that the areas that are red and yellow in this map are a higher density of foreclosures, and we find that that often correlates with higher levels of blight. So we've been able to use some, and we can, it can drill down onto a more, even into a more municipal-centric data, so you could look at specific neighborhoods, specific cities, to see where the foreclosures are the highest, and we've seen that that often correlates with, with where you see the most blight. So we've been able to use that to help municipalities, sort of with, with how to work, work through some of the blight that they've had, especially around the foreclosure crisis. So really quickly, I'll give some statutory and legal authority for our program itself. So what we do is we work with municipalities through the receivership process, which is under the state san, which is under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 127I, which states that violations of the state sanitary code, so under the Board of Health, that won't be promptly remedied, the appointment of, and the appointment of receivers in the best interest... receivers in the best interest of occupants, which the court has also defined as vacant properties because the sanitary code applies to those as well, then a receiver can be appointed. So, that's really the legal authority for our program and for what we, what we do with municipalities. So, we work closely with the Boards of Health and municipalities for particular properties that have state sanitary code violations. So, the state sanitary code is what requires minimum levels of habitability and we work with properties that have violations of that code. Typically, they're severe violations of the code, roofs that are collapsing, properties that are severely overgrown, properties that are missing all of their pipes, things like that. So, this is a quick step-by-step of what our process looks like and it looks, it always looks a little different from one municipality to another because we, our goal is really a partnership with you, so we're working, you know, we work with sort of what works best for your community and can make changes along the way. So, we start by identifying the distressed, identifying distressed properties within your municipality. We usually leave that up to the Board of Health and to the select board and to your community because you will always know your community better than I will. With that being said, the resources, you know, we do have resources available to help along the way if that's something your community is looking for. And we also look for, part of the receivership is that it needs to be economically feasible. So, that little house that was in the corner of the last slide showed kind of a depiction of economic feasibility. So, a receiver has to be able to recoup their costs at the end of a receivership if that's, if that's what's, if that's as far as we end up taking the case. So, the property needs to be, be able to be financially feasible to be fixed up. So, the next step is setting up property site inspections with our office and this is really to determine that the severity of the violations at the property, but also to make sure it does kind of meet that financial feasibility component. We don't want to take properties on that we won't be able to actually follow through with receivership if we need to because we don't want to make empty threats. The next, the next step after we've sort of identified the properties, made sure that they're ripe for receivership, is a title search and identifying the owners of the property. So, our office will do, will do a title search for the property, determine any mortgage holders, interest holders, lien holders, whether there's, you know, federal tax liens, state tax liens, and identify the owners and also find addresses for all of those parties. So, our office uses our Investigations Division to do, to do this search to be able to get a thorough history of what's going on at the property ownership-wise. So, from that, we send out a demand letter to all the interested parties. So, this includes mortgage holders, lien holders, the owners, and this demand letter tells them that there are violations of the sanitary code at the property, that they need to respond to the letter and let us know if they're willing to make repairs to the property within a certain amount of time. If they don't respond or if they aren't willing to make the repairs, then we'll move forward with requesting that the court appoint someone to make those repairs. And the majority of the time from this letter alone, we get responses from either a bank who helps hold the mortgage or an owner who has moved away but wants to still maintain the property and they'll make repairs to the property from that letter alone. And during that process, I'll coordinate with all of you and with the Board of Health to make sure, and building departments and everything like that, to make sure they're making the repairs and pulling proper permits or anything like that, to make sure they're, they're following all of the requirements that you all have. But the majority of the time, that is how we, how we get compliance, is just through this demand letter alone. For the minority of cases where no one is willing to make the repairs, we'll move forward with requesting that the court appoint someone to make repairs to the property. So, we file a case in the housing court requesting that the court appoint someone to make repairs. Our office will draft the documents to file this case, will file the case in court. We will need, we will need some things from the Board of Health. They'll sign affidavits about the conditions of the property, inspections they've done to the property, different things like that to, so the court knows what the, what the condition of the property is. After, after a receiver is appointed, the receiver makes the repairs to the property and at the end of the process, they can place a lien on the property for the amount of their repairs. And they can foreclose on that lien, similar to how a bank would foreclose on their lien, and it's all approved by the court throughout the process. Receivers are approved by the court. There, in Worcester, there's a list of approved receivers, so they're usually contractors or people who have done construction work and are experienced in this area. Most of them work with distressed properties frequently, so they really understand what needs to be done to distressed properties and are able to, able to do that. And the court has a list of, a list of receivers and we will go down that list, so that means sure it's a fair distribution of receivers. So, our last few slides are just a few pictures, excuse me. A few pictures of some of the results we've seen. It's a picture of our team, the Attorney General. So, this is a property at 1031 Dwight Street in Holyoke. This is its before picture. You can see it's boarded up. If you go to the next slide, it has, you can see the interior of the property. There's debris all over. The bathroom has been ransacked. If you look at the back of the shower there, that's what it looks like when someone steals all the pipes from a house. And then this is the after picture here. One of the reasons we like to include this one in the, in the slide is because the receiver for this property was, was basically two guys who were in a pickup truck who had construction experience. So, it really shows that receivers don't have to be huge construction companies, but they can be, they can be guys who know how to do work and can, you know, can do work like this. So, this is some interior shots of it. You can see it's not, you know, they're not granite countertops, they're not tile floors. It's, it's the minimum standards of habitability, so that means you have cabinets, you have working bathrooms, you have working appliances, but they're, it's not meant to make it a palace in there. The next picture is 36 Liberty Street in New Bedford. Similar condition, you can see it's been boarded. And it's been, the interior of it was, has been destroyed. This one was actually right across from a park that the town had recently spent a ton of money renovating, so this property was something that they really wanted. This property was a blight to both the area, the new park. It was a problem for children who were playing in the park. And this is what it looks like at the end. Similarly, you know, the appliances aren't stainless steel, they're sort of standard appliances, but it made a great home for a first-time home buyer. We had a press event with the Attorney General at that where she played some basketball with the kids across the street afterwards. So, that, those were just a few after stories and I'll really quickly talk about our Strategic Demo Fund as well. So, this is a new fund for our, for our program. It's funded through some of our national mortgage settlement money and it's, it's helping municipalities with strategic demolition. So, one of the, one of the common things we've heard throughout our eight years working with distressed properties was the need for more, more money to do some strategic demolition. Part of it was properties that we had to say no to because they were in too bad of shape to make, to make a viable receivership and some of it was just properties that municipalities didn't know what to do with. So, we used some of our money to start a Strategic Demolition Fund, which allows municipalities to apply to our, one of our grantees across the Commonwealth to receive some funding to help them with demolition costs. So, we've set some criteria for these, for these funds. Our main criteria are the, the need for the demolition, so the threat to the public health and public safety, the scope of the redevelopment plan, so what are you going to do with it afterwards? Is it going to be a park? Is it going to be, you know, sold as lots to neighbors? Sort of what's the plan for afterwards because we don't want to demo it and then have a vacant lot that grows grass 10 feet tall every summer? What's the, what's the need in the community for this and then what's the municipal support? So, making sure the municipality really is behind this. And these are four grantees. So, in this area, it'd be Worcester Community Housing Resources. It'd be the grantee who reviews the applications and hats can send out the, the applications and RFPs to, to you all if that's something you're interested in. And each grantee was awarded $125,000. So, Worcester Community Housing Resources has allocated some of that money in a first round, but they'll be starting a second round of applications in the near future. And I can give you the contact information of the person to reach out to there if that's something you're interested in. So, this is just a quick map of our jurisdiction, but you're in Worcester Community Housing Resources in the middle. So, that's, that was very quickly the, our Strategic Demo Fund. It's, it's a pretty, it's pretty straightforward. It is an application process and you'll need to lay out those, the kind of four criteria that we, that we've set out for making sure it really meets that strategic part of the demolition, but that's, those are all things in the application and if you have questions, WCHR is great about, about reaching out to, reaching out and answering any questions you have. With that said, does anybody have any questions about either the abandoned housing initiative or the Strategic Demolition Fund?
I have a question, only because I noticed the communities that you have are very much... Jessie, do you need me out of the microphone?
I noticed that the examples that you had were communities where, I'm assuming because of their size, they have water and sewage. And I think some of the problems that we're facing in our community is that water and sewage would need to be provided by the homeowners or the builder, whatever the case is, and some of those properties just don't have the space. Have you had experience with that and what typically happens to those properties? So, we have had experience with septic and different things like that and we certainly have communities that don't have water and sewage provided. Those are assessments that if it was a property that was referred to us, if we can have that information ahead of time, those are things I'll flag for a receiver and possibly have someone get some numbers on it before, before we kind of start the whole process, just to make sure it's financially feasible. But we certainly have had ones where the receiver was required to completely replace the septic system and had to work around some of those, some of those components. So, it's certainly something we've dealt with before, certainly something we have receivers who have experience in that area. With that said, as I'm sure you all know, septic can end up being very expensive, especially when it's on lots that are unusually sized or don't have room for it, but we have made it work in other cases and it certainly wouldn't preclude, preclude you from being able to refer any properties to us. It's just another consideration in whether it's economically feasible. Any other questions? Thank you. There are handouts at the back for anyone else if you're interested.
So, I'm saying this is an application process, so it's not a grant, it's not a deadline, it's...
The strategic, the abandoned housing initiative, so the first part I talked about...
Yep.
Is really, you know, it's up to you all whenever you, if you decide you want to refer properties to me, just give me an email or give me a call. The packets that I gave, all of you have my card in them and that's, you know, use that, reach out to me and as soon, whenever you're ready, I'm, I'm basically free to start the process that doesn't need any application or anything like that. The Strategic Demolition Fund part of it, that will require, that, that's an application process through Worcester Community Housing Resources and then our office approves those, the applications that they, that they find to meet the criteria.
And do they have deadlines or do they have an open enrollment?
They will have deadlines, so they just finished a first round of funding. There's still funding available, so they haven't rolled out their second RFP yet, but I can, I'll make sure I email Jen the contact information for the person at WCHR who will roll out that second fund. I think they plan on rolling it out in the next month or two so that demolition that we're scheduled for the spring could start then.
Okay, and one last thing. So, is it, as I'm hearing it, it sounds like maybe a referral for the abandoned and then if it doesn't meet criteria, then we move kind of to the demolition? Is that typically what happens or...
No, so it really, it doesn't have to happen that way. The, mostly because there are, you know, if the property is town-owned and it's one that you'd be interested in looking to demo, it probably wouldn't be one you'd want to refer to my office just because you probably don't want me filing a case against the town. So, so typically we see a lot of ones that are town-owned that are going into the demolition process. It also allows for more redevelopment because you are in control of the properties you own, so if it's demoed, you have more ability to decide what you want to do with it afterwards, which is one of the, the criteria that they ask for, so it allows for a little more freedom to look at that, that area of the application for the demolition grant as well.
Okay.
So, they don't have to, they don't have to follow one another, but the first part of it, whenever, you know, whenever, if you all decide you're interested, whenever you want, you can give me a call and I'll schedule a time to come out and meet with you or to look at some properties.
Okay, thank you. I can think of two.
Do you want us to stay or...
Oh, you can. We know you have a long drive.
Are we going to put this on a future agenda item with some possible properties, town or just within town?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I also... Yeah, I think too, we also need to, you know, even if they're not town-owned, we, there are definitely some that we need to, we need to look at for this, so.
I think we can do that. I, like you know, I've talked with a treasure collector about, you know, how we would go about identifying some of those and that was something that I think we need to discuss on. We've never really had an initiative to look at that and I think it's important because it would certainly be helpful to us because we are one of those communities that does not have a lot of money for legal fees and this whole program, you know, takes a lot of that, uh, away from the town and then all the orchestration of coordinating contractors and things like that to improve the, the location, I think is a win-win for the town if you do it.
Would a workshop dedicated just to this subject be worthwhile?
I think so.
Whether it's this or a couple little items, sure. I'm, I'm in.
I'll plan on scheduling a workshop. I want to say within the next three weeks. We have another board meeting coming up on the 25th of the week. Three weeks, okay.
Next item, gold business. First item, that is... On December 21st, we had Jack McCoppy from the MSBA, the Executive Director of that organization, basically, uh, MSBA funds, grant funds, communities for school facilities. Actually, on the 7th, 12th, on the 12th and, sorry, the 7th of December, we had Gani Energy, who is our green energy contractor in Millville, come to do a follow-up assessment on the facilities at the elementary school here. And basically, we were funded with grant money to do weatherization on this building, lighting... lighting, exterior lighting, LEDs, and their interest was to come in and look at our boiler and our heating and ventilation systems and the like for upgrades and possibilities and the availability of grant money. The work that had been done on the weatherization significantly reduced the oil fuel consumption in this past season, as well as the electrical usage has been decreased significantly, probably at least a 20% reduction in exterior lighting costs. So that's all favorable in this next coming budget season. We're faced with significant challenges with this building. It's just about 25 years old. We have issues with the old boiler, old boiler is actually the room, as well as the fuel oil tank, which is, which has been in the ground for 25 years. If that should leak or whatever, we would have significant issues compartmental. So the result of the meeting with Jack McCarthy, he indicated, number one, that they perhaps could help us with the oil tank, not to take advantage now, but provide some funding to corner whatever the solution is in the replacement of that tank. And then the other portion of this is we're waiting on a final report from Gani Energy on heating and ventilation control in this building, as well as recommendations on boiler and a number of issues that there are possibilities of grant funding in all of that. And this next round starts, it's due on February 17th. So we've got just a little over a month to analyze the data that's been collected and Mr. McCarthy was very, he was a man, very cordial and he unfortunately, anything that's done to this building, the town owns the building, it's our most valuable asset, but it's extremely expensive and it's quite a burden. Do you like to add anything?
I think that I have been in touch with Dr. Hawke and he has spoken on behalf of the superintendent as well, you know, mindful that we're looking at trying to be helpful. One of the reasons I invited with the request coming from the chairman and the rest of his board, had Mr. McCarthy come out, was trying to get a jump before the actual statements of interest were put out. So we'll be paying close attention to that and I will be sending out another correspondence to Mr. McCarthy to make sure that whatever information that we have to supply, we'll do that. And hopefully we'll be able to obtain some assistance because we know that the superintendent was not able to come for previously scheduled meeting that we had, has, you know, indicated that we have some of these items that we looked at on our list. That particular tour of this building was attended by the superintendent and the principal. So, you know, we're trying to work in partnership, but at the end of the day, this piece of the puzzle is very important to this board because the town owns the building. And at the end of the day, we have to also convince the public that the investments on repairs and maintenance will increase the longevity of the building and save us money. So I think we have a really good shot and, you know, I'll be talking with you as soon as I get back as a follow-up.
In the interim, I'll expedite that report that's due from Gani. Some good news on 171 Central Street on the cleanup.
I just have to remove myself. One of our employees is a neighbor of the property and chooses to recuse herself anytime a discussion comes up, so she's gone.
The DEP inspector has confirmed that the demolition debris has been all removed from that site and they're proposing a public meeting with the town sometime in the near future. But that's going to be pretty bad.
Mr. Chairman, again, this was a follow-up of the town. We had invested quite a bit of legal resources to trying to assist the residents that are in that area addressing the problems that we have on that particular piece of property. And so the cleanup piece was also occurring in direct relation to digging of test bits and also sampling and looking for metal debris underneath the property. So the whole notion of having a public forum was not only to have that with the DEP, but also with the EPA. And speaking with DEP, there are a few testing results that they're still waiting for because there is some contamination that's across the border in Rhode Island. And as soon as we get a handle on that date, then we'll set the forum. But Mary Drew Pixley, who heads up as the regional director, is very amenable to coming out and coming out as a team. And I think it would be really helpful to all the residents to be apprised of what's really happening and perhaps get a read on where they think this contamination is coming from, which is the most important.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is something that I do know that our account executive through Maya has come before the board and has expressed that at some point, this board would be required to actually change the insurance coverage of our existing town hall to a different policy because it has been vacant for more than 60 days. It's actually vacant for longer than that, but the insurance company had, you know, been in negotiations with us during that time and were waiting a lot of different reports to show what the damage was and whether we would actually be able to repair and go back into the building. Seeing that we don't see that happening in any near future. We finally gotten a letter from Maya and Kevin about the fact that we have up only until February 14th, in which we have to decide on actually accepting the new property coverage for the building. The only thing I can tell you about this is that I've done a lot of discussion, I had discussions with our public insurance adjuster on whether we believe this might be adequate coverage. One of the things that I had questioned was the notion of the terms and conditions being only of a basic form. But from what I understand, because of the condition of the building and because of the fact that it's vacated, that oftentimes they only offer that vacated, basic form of coverage. So as far as trying to see if we could get a different type of coverage, I've been told that that was what was negotiated and that because of the shape of the building and the condition of it, that they wouldn't necessarily go and allow us to take out more of a premium to be able to cover other additional things that could occur. So we have to make that decision in the short order. We can, we still have time to do it even on the 23rd, since the 17th would be the final date, if you want to look at all the terms and coverages, if you haven't done that. There would be some reimbursement for coverage of the building that exists now that would be given back to the town. But as you can see, the overall cost is...
Nine thousand.
Yes.
You're getting it.
Nine six eight five. So nine thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. But then there is also, as you can see in some of your email correspondence, that I have gone back and forth in questioning what other things would be coming to the town. There would be, from what I understand, some of that would be offset by coverage that we've already paid, that we can't use on the building anymore, that goes through the term this year. So I also included an email in there that talks about creating the fine coverage and it gives me the things that we'd have to do. I think we could do that between the chairman and myself, but I think what's more important is that everybody's comfortable with the coverage that they're trying to provide. And if you are, then we'll just go forward and we'll put it together.
I am fairly comfortable with this. This basically just protects the town from liability.
Right, overall, the coverage is the same, the liability piece is the same, it's the other relations to property damage that may be different.
We're not given any other real options.
Well, that was what I was trying to see and I did not see that. And I will, again, reiterate to David Vavanti, if there is anything else that we can do to provide not just adequate coverage, but we would be working to make sure that all of those aspects are covered, including issues related to the building itself, that would be the goal. However, like I said, that's what I've been told and I went through three different people, including David, to get that answer. So I don't know if there is another answer.
I think any further discussion at this forum is going to subvert, this should be an executive session.
Sure. I think that would be fine.
Me too, both legal. So we'll put a temporary hold on this discussion.
Okay, that sounds good.
The last subject under gold business is the recommendation to the board, the composition of the board selection. A few weeks ago, I made the recommendation that based on what the Department of Local Services indicated in their report to the town, that perhaps it might be worthwhile to consider the three-member board more as opposed to the twelve-member board. Basically, they indicated that Millville is a bit of an anomaly or an outlier in that having five members board basically might not be, we could consider, not what I would like to solicit from the board selection, individual comments regarding the subject. Three-member board, five-member board. A lot of us are busy at times that we can't raise a three-member quorum, which we have tonight. Two-member quorum, three-member board, probably might be more practical. But we now have a town administrator. We need to consider that. I'd like to solicit the input from all the board members, privately and individually, both Bobby and you, except replied my request. And then we'll get together in a workshop and discuss that.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add that I did have some discussion today with town council. I spoke with Barbara St. Andre, who provided us with the former information that I gave you in the last meeting, which was the way that you would do it. And basically, you would have to do it through a 60-day advance before an election, special town meeting, and then you'd have to decide on how many members you want to go down to. And usually you would have to do it on an annual basis, so you wouldn't just automatically have a three-member board. But I guess there was just some initial information that just came out through her understanding and talking with the Attorney General's office, we just had the AG's office here for a different reason. But from her interpretation and research, that the AG's office basically is not even looking or entertaining the local initiative being done in this way, which you actually vote on it and decided on a local level, that they actually are looking to have special legislation filed anytime you do this. So you can look at it in a couple different ways. You can actually refine the way in the process that you want to do and if it gets accepted by the town and then gets accepted by the state, it gets codified and you can do it the way you would like to do it. You might not have to wait two years out to decrease the board if that were your direction. But again, I'm just providing you with the information and was aware also that it was a recommendation for the size of the town in relation to the population and the report that came out from the Division of Local Services. And since we're taking the report and trying to make improvements to the town, this is just another thing to consider.
So I'm not asking for a vote on this proceeding. I'm soliciting a comment from the board members and we'll go through the discussion. I don't, you have anything wrong?
No, I don't.
Do we know when Blackstone Regional will be coming? Do you know we canceled prior to the holiday?
The superintendent, sorry, thank you. I did speak with the书记, he may be on the agenda for the next particular meeting. He did say he wanted to, unfortunately, he did not present or request for this particular meeting, but I do believe that probably will be the next meeting.
Only because I was reading in the socket call, you know, they had an article about the buildings, about BMR and about the MSBA and going forward and applying for that. And so I would hope to think that, you know, that we would be part of that discussion and what was it going to look like. Because I know he made a visit to Blackstone, I realize he was sick and couldn't come here, but, you know, I'd like to see him here before reading about it in the paper. Just me, so.
I will pass that. Observance of yours and also...
Or at least send him over or something.
I'll make a phone call. I think it should be just...
Of what their plan is and what their...
Oh, no, that would be different. He should be able to present though.
Yes.
I think he'll be prepared hopefully by the 23rd, but I'll ask again.
I would like to congratulate three seniors at BBT for winning the John and Abigail Adam Scholarships. And those are young students, Ryan DeRoges, Jacob Platt and Kenneth Tupper. What the grant does, it allows any student that wins the grant to attend the state school and credits state school for 30 months without tuition. Congratulations, guys. And again, speaking with BBT, I want to thank BBT personnel, student... And again, speaking with BBT, I want to thank BBT personnel, students, staff, the like, for all the contributing to us in getting our interim town municipal center up and going. Mrs. Callahan.
Do we also have Sunnyside Solar within the selectment forum? And I thought you just took the others out of order, so I'm going to...
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's all right. They're so fine, okay? Good for them.
Mr. Hope?
Hello, my name is Eric Holt, and I actually run a very small solar business, called Sunnyside Solar. And we're out of Lunenburg, Massachussetts. And I'm actually an authorized agent for the Clean Energy Collective. And I'm going to explain to first how this all comes together. You know, this is not a decisional meeting. It's sort of like an informal meeting right here, as far as to make the points of discussion. And what I wanted to do is kind of go over as far as what we've done over at Oxbridge, as far as the solar farm. What we're proposing to do as far as over here at Millville, and then what we look for in possible sites out there as far as putting large solar farms. The next issue is to go ahead and talk about payments and low taxes, what they call pilot programs. And then tax revenue that you can actually make from these solar farms. And the next one right there is as far as discount electricity for towns and cities, as far as 15% off the entire electric bill. And then businesses, 15%, residents is 10%. And to see if the town of Millville has any pushback or resistance as far as us actually putting a solar farm here inside Millville. You know, little solar farming 101, solar renewable energy credits. We started off with SREC number one, signed a master law. And then we went up to SREC number two with restrictions. The first one right there was sort of openly build as much as you can as fast as you can. The second one came up with some restrictions, saying you only got one megawatt of power on each parcel of land. And then they quickly come up with the next one with the problem that they couldn't get it out joint committee. So Governor Baker gave directions to go ahead and take and make sure we can get 15,000 solar people actually working. And they signed the emergency bill that was a SREC 2.5. The next program that comes out is going to be slightly different. Okay, and that's going to be tied over net metering credits. And it's in a joint committee right now. And the joint committee asked me to come back together in February timeframe. By the time they get it through the joint committee, back into the House of Representatives with amendments, back to the Senate, to the governor, it's going to be May of 2017. Yeah, but the solar companies, that's going to present a problem as far as the scheduling, as far as getting these things out. But a lot of the solar companies have already stepped in and laid off their engineers, their installers, and it's going to be hard to get those people back. The Clean Energy Collective actually wants to lean forward on a lot of these programs. When they say lean forward, it means they're going to take the money out their own pockets and put it into the nonrecurring engine area effort. That's as far as doing site-specific designs and then doing all the other work just before you get ready to go through the conservation committee, planning boards, et cetera, et cetera, and all license file. And they want to lean forward on about 10 to 11 projects. And they want to be ready to start these programs as soon as that bill is signed in May. Okay, we might not be able to get a lot of the work done in 2017, but you get a lot of the upfront work passed the Senate until winter and then 2017 and 2018 shuts us down again. But this is what we're trying to get going. Okay, solar farming 101, there are different types of electricity out there. One's DC electric, that's used in a car, as far as when you turn the car, it's got a battery. The second one right there is the alternating current. And DC, we actually generate power, actually, solar farms, in DC power. And then we run through inverters right there. We convert over to AC power, and then we time it onto the circuit. Now, there are the circuits right there, the hertz, okay, they're going up and down. Right, so we have to time that onto the circuits. And we actually pull the solar farms right there. The biggest thing we're looking for is wattage. We want to put wattage onto the circuit. Okay, you can't put a lot of wattage on a single-phase circuit. So you're going to have three-phase circuits, but you've got to make sure those three-phase circuits can actually handle it. The wattage is going to go on them. And if it doesn't, it'll just burn that circuit right up. And then also net metering credits. When we start generating electricity, a solar farm, well, even as far as solar on top of your house or on top of your garage, you take that and you sell that electricity to the utilities. Utility is what they call net metering credits. Those net metering credits are actually applied to your electric bill. So if you're turning a lot of those, right, during the summertime, when you need that electricity, during the wintertime, you have a buffer there as far as credits that are a part of your account. We do exactly the same thing. Okay, and as far as Sunnyside Solar, very, very small, so a solar business and a solar broker. We'll explain that a little bit later as far as how this authorized agent for the Clean Energy Collective. I specialize in finding very neat locations that I put solar farms in. He can give you a couple of towns right there and you're actually looking as far as where that solar farm is actually located. And the trick is looking to see where the three-phase circuit comes off that land. And a lot of times right there, it's put back someplace that's land that's really not really used for any other purpose. And then to marry, we're dealing with landowners to either buy the property or lease the property. A solar farm, a solar on Route, exit number one, Route 146, we actually purchased that property. And then to marry, we're taking the work with the landowners through the entire process, including a meeting like this, planning meetings, conservation meetings, et cetera, et cetera, all the way through the entire process. And then also, we turn around, we find commercial, municipal, and residential meter owners and offer a discount off their entire electric bill. You say entire electric bill. So take the bill and break it up like this. And this side over here is called supply, and this was actually supplying electricity. Could be Canada Hydro, could be as far as Plymouth, could be up at Seabrook Nuclear. And then that's the supply side. Over here, as far as the distribution side, we're looking as far as all those wires and poles and all out there, right, just that part of the bill that you actually pay for every month. And then up in three here is all the taxes and the handling fees, which talk about the entire bill. It's not just over here on the supply side that we give a discount. It's off the entire bill. Example, your house, you've got to pay $100 a month for electricity, and we can turn around and residents, give them a 10% off. So we'll pick up that bill, pay for it, Clean Energy Collective bill, and then I'll turn around and bill back the residents 90% of that. Town, as an example, all your different bills that you have, but put all those together, you can take, say exactly, an example, $10,000 a month. Clean Energy Collective can pick up that bill, and what they'll do is turn around and bill you back for $850 a month. So that's a 15% saver right at the top. Okay, as far as Oxbridge. We looked at this one right here, and actually, I used to stop over here constantly when my dogs have been taking a cup of coffee. Anyways, I saw the forced sale sign that was over here. And I started talking to the elderly citizens of Gulf Drive for a long time. And Mass Department of Transportation shut them down because, just like myself, they hook a ball, okay, hook it this way. And the popping balls out here, as far as on Route 146. So Mass DOT says, stop, cease and desist, right? Don't, you can't have a Gulf Drive racer anymore. So he's had services in there, Buffalo riding, Brazilian parties and all, right? He's leasing up for it. So I asked him as far as if he was interested in leasing it, and he said yes. And we began a process of looking into leasing. He came back and says, no, I want to retire, I want to sell. And when the Clean Energy Collective stepped in, they actually bought the site. And what we looked at as far as how much room we have to work with, realized we could actually put in two megawatts with power inside here. I'll show you a picture of this next, next frame here. And here's McDonald's, the three-phase circuit that's here is speeding right off this Route 146A. You notice also as far as the BJ Holstia. If you look up as far as the roof on that, you'll notice a solar on that roof also. And there's still a bit more room as far as on that circuit out there on 146A. Okay, this is the solar farm itself. And one of the selectmen in Oxbridge really didn't like the idea of solar farm because of the way it would look. If you're driving down 146, 65 miles an hour, you'll see the solar farm for about six and a half seconds. If you're driving north, about five and a half seconds. The only people that can actually see the solar farm is back here on Providence Street. And it's one of the houses back there, we offered them a 10% discount. I mentioned it's a 2.0 megawatt AC solar farm. And this is one megawatt over here, and this is one megawatt over here. Just to give you a size, as far as how many of these solar farms actually are. Okay, we started looking as far as over here, as far as Millville. And we located two sites. Site A, which is right off of Main Street, Route 122. And another one's up on Lincoln Street. And then we went through the type process as far as the solar over the district. The one up on Lincoln Street was approved back in 2014. The site is a metal holding area, and that site really needs to be cleaned up before you actually put a solar farm on there. And then to marry, Clean Energy Collective originally just wanted to cross over to the Main Street circuit and go right across that, that other site, Site A. And then we applied for the solar over the district for that Site A. And for some reason, back in 2015, that was taken off the warrant. And what was taken off the warrant, that was a critical error that was actually made because the solar farms are actually going to go on to the end of SREC 2.0 effort or the beginning part of the SREC was going to be 3.0 effort or actually ended up to be 2.5. Because that moved, it actually moved that entire effort out from 2017 and beyond. That was a critical error that was actually made at that time. So we started looking as far as the different sites. You see Site A, which is right down through here. It's right off of Main Street. Site B is right up through here off of Lincoln Street. The three-phase circuit is right here on Main Street. And we noticed right here, this area right through here, as far as wetlands. And we looked at that nine different times this Sunday. And looked at it, looked at it right there, and realized, the owner's help, that that was actually man-made. The contractor was actually in there. He was building some houses up here. It's two housing foundations up in three here. He built, he got a bulldozer, and all he did is just bulldoze all the dirt off of there and create a man-made dam as far as wetlands and all. So this is actually down on Route 122. This is on Main Street. If you're standing on Route 122 and look straight up, that's that three-phase circuit. Coming off of that right there are some power poles, single-phase, that goes up this long driveway. There's two houses up here that actually feeds over that. There's an old garage that's here, and there's a tree line that's right here. And what you really can't see down on that tree line is an old auto junkyard that was never cleaned up. It was never, ever cleaned up. And the process of the owner right there, they bought the property, turned around, and they started cleaning this up. These are all the auto parts that came out of here. Here's some more. Okay, this is the work that is in sight. This is actually looking south down through here, and this is all the area we're talking about. Okay, more auto parts. This is actually a fifth-wheeler, this is down inside here. More parts, this is more where they dug into this, before they realized all the stuff that was in here. More parts. This is almost, almost cleaned up. Actually, looking north on this site, and this is Lincoln Street right up in three here. This is that metal holding area that you said. This is what it looks like now, as far as, this is looking south. This is Route 122 down here. This is what it actually looks like all cleaned up. And then there's another that you're looking south. Now, if the Clean Energy Collective gets a chance to build a site, a couple of things you're going to say. They may use this driveway to go ahead and come up with the eighteen-wheelers and go into the site up here. So that means possibly this driveway is going to have to be repaired after all those work is done. Still, the lease is going to be applied as far as the garage. And you're going to see as far as the upgrade of these poles. I'm not really sure if they're going to use these existing poles or put in some brand-new poles. But you'll notice as far as it's going to change from a single-phase wire up to a three-phase wire. And what's really nice about this, again, as far as the tree line, you won't be able to see the solar farm from the street, from Main Street, because it's behind this tree line. Okay, the second site is up on Lincoln Street. Okay, this is a site right up through here. This is the parcel in the end. It's a metal recycled holding area. And all the shots I did were right about from here, shooting it south. And you can see what it looks like right now. Okay, this is actually looking this way west. It was actually looking east a little bit. This is looking south, and this is the old Riley Airport terminal buildings. And this is where to look if Clean Energy Collective can actually build a site. And they'll actually see a fence along here, and the panels are arranged this way. This is over Providence Street over in Oxbridge. You'll actually see these parallel with the road as far as up on Lincoln Street. Okay, payment and low taxes, next thing I want to talk about. Okay, and if the Clean Energy Collective or any company can actually put a solar farm in, really start these things now as far as the tax structure, as far as how you're going to do that. If you need help, we'll talk to Shirley. They've got three solar farms up there. Oxbridge has got two with 3.0 megawatts. Sutton's putting one in, and that's a 1.0 megawatt. Another site is over at Sutton also, and that actually will come up to about 6 megawatts if you build it. And then fair, come up with a taxable rate. Okay, if you say it's going to be a million dollars for taxes, it's not going to get built. But if you say a reasonable amount, say, for example, Oxbridge will leave us $18,000 per megawatt, and there's escalators inside there, then that's doable as far as these solar companies. Okay, now, our goal originally was to sell 4.6 megawatts on Site A and Site B, and that will generate about $18,000 per megawatt. It's $82,000, $800 per year as far as taxes coming off of there. And then to marry, you know, extrapolate that out, and it's $2,017, and it's over $2 million as far as taxable income that's coming in. And also, this taxable income, you don't have to put your kids in school. You've got some fire protections, police protection is going to be out there. But normally, the solar farms just sit there, they don't have any need for assistance. Okay, discounts. Discounts on electric bills. Okay, we offer right now two different programs at Clean Energy Collective. 15% program and a 10%. The 15% is for the commercial businesses and municipalities, and a 10% as far as residential. And that's on these programs we have right now. That may change in 2017 with the new bill. We're not really sure yet. Okay, how it works, the Clean Energy Collective steps in, they have sold these very, very large solar farms, and they can generate a lot of the solar, generate electricity. You need to sell it to somebody. So what it is, is these agreements are placed right there to sell it to the large utilities. These large utilities are EverStor's and National Grid. And the National Grid buys these. They don't pay you dollars, right, they pay you net metering credits. So now, a company needs to go out and figure out how to use these net metering credits. So you go out and you take and find residents, offer them a 10% discount. Commercial and municipalities. For example, commercials, we had nine solar farms that came online this year with Clean Energy Collective. And a company, AMP Corporation, stepped in and bought four, not bought, actually was assigned four and a half megawatts for the panels on all these nine different solar farms. So this is how it started. Okay, the Clean Energy Collective right there, again, they pay the bill, and then to marry, they take and build the resident 90% of what they actually did. Commercial municipalities, they'll turn around and pay the bill, and then to marry, bill them 85% of what they paid. These contracts are not short-term contracts. Again, the solar farms go in for 25 years and five, five-year options, so 50 years. And I'll, same example, these contracts are up for 20 years. And they're fully transferable over to a municipal, municipality right there. You know, you could be in business for the next year. Right, as far as the houses and all that are out there as far as residential, you just make that as far as part of the residence. I want to sell it to you, got a 10% discount, and it's going to go on for 12 years, 15 years, whatever it's going to be. Businesses, I've got businesses also that are out there. And I have one business up in Leamester, and he's getting ready to sell his business. And he said, well, if I pick this up, can I go and transfer to the person who picks it up? I said, yes, a 15% discount. It's an old Holiday Inn that was converted over to the assisted living. And my mother-in-law's from there, well, the wife's home. And my mother-in-law's from there, well, the wife's mother. And anyways, we walk in here, room, it's having a temperature, it's 85 degrees. It's like, whoa, absolutely, whoa, actually. Okay, the discounts right here are guaranteed, they stay the same. The price of electricity goes up, stays the same. The business goes down, and stays the same. It's a 15% discount, okay, no matter what happens. Okay, for municipalities, okay. You know, Town Hall, Police Department, Fire Department. I notice as far as you guys have got some street lighting here, schools. I wonder if these lights use any electricity up here, okay?
It's all going to be changed now.
I know, okay. And I was going to mention that as far as driving in here, because I noticed that you had the LED lighting, okay? And I was going to say something with that. This discount we're talking about, change it all up. Decrease your bill, okay? And I'll show you as far as we're here on the supply side. Give it a discounted supplier, Constellation. And then turn around over here, do anything distribution. And your taxes, the management fees are going to come down. Just a little bit. Clean Energy Collective will go ahead and cover 15% off that entire bill. Okay, this is, you know, it's a municipality, we need to think about this. Okay, way forward, you know, if the town wants a 15% discount, yes, get your municipal logic bills together, send them in. What we'll do is put together a proposal, we'll put back down your proposals to you as far as how to actually get the savings, as far as what we do. You guys can review it, accept it. And then from there, we'll do all the paperwork, you signed up. And what we'll do right now is give you a small amount. The Oxbridge site's 3.0 megawatts with the power, that was almost fully assigned. Went online in July, almost completely fully assigned by December. But there's still some room over there on the Oxbridge site as far as the solar. And then as we bring on more solar farms, for example, Millville, Blackstone, down, a little bit further down south here. Right, then from there, we'll bring you on more and more of this kind of electrical power. Okay, again, I talked about the supply, distribution, taxes. And kind of recommend that you actually look also as far as the supply side of electric bill. And take a look at a company called Constellation. And they offer a pretty good discount. Like, as far as changing over the LED lighting, you guys already started on. And then from there, our discounts off all this. If you want to see as far as, you mentioned as far as bringing community, okay? If you want to go up and see as far as how Chelmsford and Shirley are actually going to do. Chelmsford generates, I think it's 4%, 5% over their needs, because they put solar on top of their schools and all. Shirley has now put the three solar farms in, and they're also putting a fourth one in. Okay, they're driving in to move with that. And their electric bill, last time I talked, the bill over there was, I think it was $49 if you add that up. So this is how you manage it first of all. Okay, closing, okay, we'll run over as far as the sites. Millville, Oxbridge, analysis for Millville. Payment and load taxes, discount electricity. You know, while they'll be asking for, there's narrow setbacks, close to water runoff, runoff areas, installing much of the soils we can as far as they'll have. The site we have here in Millville is a perfect site. I mean, it's one of those perfect sites you look at right there as far as it rolls down, as far as from Lincoln Street. And why not take advantage of this and put as much solar in there? As much solar can actually fit on that circuit down there, Route 122. Okay, if you go up to Shirley, there's an old airport there with 6 megawatts with the power into that particular site. And you take a look as far as some of the panels and all, they're kind of within 20 feet of the pond. There's runoff areas out there with the old runway, right, through, right across those. But the analogy is, think about this for a second. If it's raining out, I look at my driveway, and I see all the rain hitting my driveway, okay? Then I bring my car up, and the rain is still raining. The rain is just going to hit the car and then go onto the driveway. Okay, we're not going to disturb that flow of water going through there. It's just putting up some solar panels and maximizing the space. Anyways, like I said, this Millville site is a perfect site. You know, this is the end result, okay? It's a win-win-win-win-win situation. You already got one win out of there, okay? That one win is the clean-up effort that went into 50, 56 Main Street. The area's all been cleaned up. And if you does not use for solar, that probably makes excellent housing lots over and through there. Okay, the second win is actually going to be for the town. You can make some money as far as the discount electricity. The next win is going to be for the residents inside the town, okay? The next win is you can make food requirement as far as less amount of carbon dioxide effects of putting atmosphere. You know, and then that next win there is for the win for people actually owning property. So, you know, we're not going to buy this property in Millville. It's going to be actually leased, these leases go out there, they're open about 25 years, plus five, five-year options, okay? So therefore, they're giving a financial interest. That's the sixth win up there also, that's what I made, but I won't talk about that. And I just want to show you as far as some other sites that we have, we've been looking at. This is up in Douglas, Massachusetts. Clement, Carter, Carter-Huffington, Hopia, Rockland, Willis. Those are the kind of sites we're actually looking at. Anyways, any questions?
We have a, the town has an aggregation agreement going on. Do you supply two?
Yeah, this is, there's a bubble beyond that agreement. That agreement goes over here on the supply side, okay? This is, this is great. They can have that agreement in place, Constellation agreement, anything else. The Clean Energy Collective will step in and do the entire bill, okay? All, whatever's left, okay? If you've got a discount from this company you're talking about, 5% on the supply side, and the bill goes down by $100, Clean Energy Collective will still cover it as far as that entire bill. Or portions of it. Any other questions?
I guess the other concern, the residents, environmental concerns, the wetting.
Yep.
Could you run a magnetometer through the land and see it?
Well, actually, one of the steps would be as far as the wetland delineation. And all will be done in the spring. And that's where the environmental people actually come out their doctors. And they'll come out and take a look at the land. And they'll make up a report. The report right there is, of course, with the local conservation folks right there, and also as far as the mass DEP. And then at that point, right, all you see as far as wetlands, that's an airplane flying over. Just kind of sensing as far as what's down there. When they come back out, realize that the man-made dam has been corrected, all that material's been pulled out of the ground, they can say, "Yeah, it's so long ago." And one of the things to consider also is town-owned property. You know, there's another process right there as far as companies going in there leasing the land and for, say, $5,000, they're putting in a solar farm and having what they call PPA in place, a power purchasing agreement in place, to go ahead and sell that power holding here to the school. Example is that up to Orange, Massachusetts, a very large solar farm up there on SREC Number 1, had generated 6 megawatts with the power. A lot of that power right there is put on the grid, and it's pushed down to Lowell, Massachusetts. Lowell, Massachusetts, in fact, rises right in the bank, 21.2 cents per kilowatt hour. It's way down there, it's worth about 11 cents per kilowatt hour. Tremendous savings. And also, you know, these efforts don't cost the town anything, right? This is all privately funded. This comes off of the Morgan Stanley bond. And this, we have a full line of credit. The Clean Energy Company has a full line of credit to cut off this. There's also a bond put in place to remove it. That end of that 25 years, the end of the holiday option years, there's money there to go ahead and pull these things out. And take a look as far as what we've done. Everything's recycled, all the wires, took it out, all the glass panels, all the panels are actually packaged up and sent down to South America. They may have degraded a little bit, maybe 18, 20%. Bring them down to South America right there, install almost 100%.
What kind of light can you expect out of the panels?
These are 25-year panels. About 325 watts. And Canadian National Panels. And they, sometimes they get them that broke right out of the box, they threw you right out of the box. But other than that, they put them in, and then they go for 25 years. Clean Energy Collective also operate and maintain the solar farm for the life of the system. And they have computer programs that monitor what's going on. They had a failure over in Framingham, Massachusetts, which was one of the sites. And was actually because of a snow blow, they got a community pounding, they got a major pounding. Once they saw that, they stepped in, ordered the bands, went a week, a couple of weeks, and they changed up the panels.
How long are the inverters?
The inverters are guaranteed for 10 years. And if they do fail, they just bring another in. They'll bring the entire solar farm down, swap out the inverter, and then bring it back up online. And so there's no cost at all in this thing, or other town.
So basically, the impact you're, the environment?
Have we gone through them yet? Have we gone through them, or Clean Energy Collective?
No, I mean.
Of the site.
The site.
Oh, we're, yeah, again, the next step will be wetlands delineation. Either we can put two megawatts on the southern Main Street property, or we'll be limited down to one megawatt. It's going to be their determination as far as exactly what's considered as wetlands in there.
I see in a lot of the pictures, there's a huge amount of debris that's been, auto-lifting, yes, and strewn. And I'm talking a lot with different departments. And the one concern I could have is knowing there's auto cars, automobile cars, that are very, very quite substantive. We already have some issues in this town with regards to contamination. And the one thing, it's not that I have anything against solar energy. There's so many who voted for the Green Communities Act, okay? So you're not talking to somebody who's not in support of that. But I have some grave concerns about the material that has been removed, the condition of the actual soils, and what permeates into the wetlands, not just the wetlands and where they're delining. And the fact that a lot of that work was done with no oversight or permitting. We have a site right now that we talked about today that has, you know, been logged on, what has been removed, and what's the quality of the debris that's been removed. So my concern is about the health and well-being going forward. It's great to create, you know, clean energy, but it does no good if you've got contaminated soil and things like that.
Just so happens, we have the person that actually did the work on that site.
I understand, I understand. But we have a planning board that's also in that process still, so. I know tonight was a presentation, but I want to just say publicly, that is some concern. And as great as those pictures are, you know, it raises other questions that need to be answered, I think. And we have to what is more, and what are the planning boards going to do for it.
From what I've heard, and John, back up, is that there's no oil that was even down there. You know, as far as all the vehicles were moved years and years and years ago. You can take a look as far as the type of tires they have, and the rims and all the rest of them. That dates from back in the 50s, though. 50s, 40s, 50s. So if there's any drop of oil down there, it's already been eaten away.
We could take a man who brings anything. We don't vary capacity. We don't vary, you know, to be able to do that. So it is a problem. It's not something that is necessarily even before me owning or not, so. But anyway, I'm not going to get into that, but I just need to just put that out there.
What I'd like to suggest, and again, we've got snow on the site right now. But in the spring, after the snow melts and get all done, just have your conservation folks actually go out and walk the land and take a look at it. I know that there's still piles of debris that are out there.
I left, the pictures that you see there, I left those piles of metal right there. Basically, tires, there was an eight-foot snowball buried in the dirt. And we're driving, and it's a loader, and it popped up out of the runner. It was buried, you know, maybe a foot down. And all those tires and wheels were buried in the ground. There was car transmissions, there was a couple of motors, just mostly tires, exhaust systems, doors, fenders. There was no whole cars buried, you know, with a complete engine bay. Basically, parts, doors, fenders, all that stuff. And it's all still there for anybody left there, for anybody that wants to come and witness it.
Again, we'd like to invite your conservation folks to come walk the land. And also, the selectmen, please, come walk the land. It's a lot better now than it was.
One last point would be the state's among the Lincoln Street. Planning board, considering the, the trepancy and whatever between Lincoln Street and the chain of events.
That's going to be up to you as far as what you want. One of the sites as far as over into the Oxbridge, as far as the Providence Street, we originally suggested as far as go ahead and put a hedge row in, and let that develop over the years right there. And then from there, we wouldn't be able to see the solar farm. But the planning folks right there said, "No, you don't have to do that. It's only one house over there, you can actually see that site." And it's fine just to leave the fence in place. But again, the planning board, if that's what you guys want, let me find the criteria.
I don't believe that's what the planning board said. They came to us in October, they did the same presentation. And I don't believe they said that we would not require a landscaping.
No, you guys can determine what you want to do, okay?
We also have several residents up there, and they're going to have to be dug. And I'm sure they will want some kind of screening.
Again, the western part of the site.
Yeah, it was out. I misunderstood. Is it possible to have the soil, to Jennifer's point, is it possible to have the soil tested for contamination?
Yeah, walk it through.
That might be local, it might weigh some of the tax concerns in several points.
Be easy enough to drill some wells and then, you know, take water samples at several times during the year. Wouldn't be a big deal.
I think that would go all the way.
Is that something the town picked up for us to cross?
I think we have a lot to talk about.
This is why we're here.
Yeah, it's not negotiating the aspect of it, it's just, you asked us some questions. Just like, you know, from a town perspective, when you're really moving a lot of earth, and it was definitely, you know, scraping, I mean, I don't know which slide it was, but it receives massive clearing. I mean, whether you're removing trees or tree borders, I know there was a complaint that when we bought a planning board about encroachment issues, that has never been fully satisfied, I think, for the residents. So, you know, earth removal permits or being able to move large gear or debris, all of that. Normally, you would go before you lay out the plan, and the respective boards would go visit the property before, oversee enduring, and then visit the property after. So whether it's, you know, an earth removal board, or whether it's a conservation board, to my knowledge, they have not been, you know, on the premises. But there's been a lot of work that's been done, enough so that we've had some residents. So again, I'm putting out what I believe here at Port Moll.
Yeah, this is the, the normal process is, okay, you get the folks that want to lease the land, you know, they sign them. And then from there, the next thing we do as far as, do a site-specific design. And all this information actually comes into, presented to the conservation committee, presented to the planning board, presented to the selectmen, right? All the different committees, the mass, the folks right there as far as the DEP, all the rest of the folks. And all along the way, right there, you get comments like this. So I'm just trying to give you the heads up as far as the direction we're trying to head in.
Sure. Yeah, and then those things that happen at the state regulatory, but there's also the town regulatory. The town has their bylaws, and they expect people when they're looking, whether it's to start a new business or to alter, you know, use of the land. That's why you go over with a permit, you know, purview of zoning board or a planning board. So there's all of that. So it's just making sure those checks and balances happen in a fashion that represents the ability of the public to weigh in. And that just supports the program further along. And that's, you know, part of, I think, what we're finding is we're, you know, we may be a little bit ahead of where we're supposed to be in terms of involvement for some of the boards who I know would like to be involved. And including that fire and police check as well. Because the property and the type of property and the usage will have implications with those kinds of things.
John, I think you had something?
No, I was just saying, I have photographs, and I have GPS locations where all the stuff was located. I have exact GPS locations where the metal was buried. I have pictures before, they're dated, every dated, they're all dated. I have pictures of everything that we did, dated. And basically, it's not a soil removal situation. It's basically landscaping, cleaning. But I don't think you need a permit for landscaping or cleaning up a mess. A mess that someone else made, but we cleaned it up.
For that scale.
I mean, it's not.
I don't think it was, it's not just putting landscaping in a small area. But when you take off all the topsoil, even if you're cleaning it, it has implications downhill for residents in terms of conservation and runoff. And when you don't have that restored for a period of time, that can have implications. It can open up the lower water areas to other possibilities of contamination. So this is. this, there's just different things. But if it was just a piece of land, even that, you know, some towns have bylaws in which you can't, you can only cut so many trees down without permission. Uh, you can't remove stone walls without the permission, so there are different things. So this town has bylaws, and it has boards that are trying to do certain things, so.
You know, this land was all cleared, cleared by a developer, and he was the former selectman, Michael Perry, and he bulldozed all the property. What grew back is all scrubbed, brushed, and he just, there was piles of dirt, cop off, it's...
So I will, I'm going to piggyback on that, because I was on board back then, John, and I had the residents, I'm not sure if it's the same residents who have come forward, but I walked their property, which are lots, both of these properties, back 90, late 90s, mid 90s, um, because of the concern of wetlands and encroachment, so I'm not sure if this is current or past or whatever, but you have to, should I use my words? Um, that developer didn't use all the legal ways to remove what was up on that lot years ago. And that's by no fault of you, it's by the fault of...
He even hired me, and I took, I think, 50 or 60 cars on there, and I charged him to take them, I had to wait for his check to clear them, but I hauled, yeah, because nobody got paid. I hauled all that stuff out, and there was a big pile of stuff left. He just took the bulldozer and pushed it.
And then I think that's the concern, John, is not what you have done.
Right.
But what, what was done previously, and what was left there.
Well, he built houses on where the cars used to be parked.
Right, and what is the impact of that now? And I know there's talk about that, you know, man-made wetlands.
Anybody know that?
Oh, no, he's just doing it for...
I just don't want to show you.
Um, but you have to admit that, you know, Hoods Brook is there. Now, what is the flow of that, which way direction did it go? That has all been changed because of what was done by the former developer. And so when we talk about wetlands, and we talk about what's in the soil, I mean, we're trying to just make sure that we're in a safe spot, so that, you know, we're not allowing someone to build on top of land.
Nobody's going, nobody's going to build over there.
I'm not saying build it, but to place a solar farm on top of land that could be contaminated, or could not be safe for the groundwater, or the residents nearby, because we're dealing with those issues in various places in town, John, and we don't want to create another one of those problems.
All right, if we don't put a solar farm there, and the land's just left alone, what are you going to do by then? Nothing. I'm cleaning up, I'm cleaning up something, I have this situation, it's got to be better for the town. Isn't that better?
John, I will go on the record that I am not against this. I just want to make sure that it is done properly and safely, so that we don't have a problem in the future. As of right now, what's, what's I've heard here around town, I'm not necessarily against the solar farm. I just want to make sure, because you and I know the individual, the developer beforehand, who's not of the best ethics.
Right, and if the land was left out, and all that crap would have been there from here to eternity.
Just want to make sure things are done properly.
Nobody was doing anything about it, you know?
That's our responsibility now.
Right.
Again, Clean Energy Collective right there, they're very competent, and they'll take care of those sort of issues. Just want to show you as far as where those houses are actually located. I think there's one here, and there's one right here. In our initial calculations, we came over right there, there's going to be actually a buffer zone right into here, and these folks right here shouldn't even be able to see the, the solar farm at all, shouldn't be able to see it. And the only thing that's going to change in their property right there, again, it's going to be three-phase, uh, wire coming off of there, whether they have to change out the power poles, right, and things like that, we're not really sure as far as how that's going to be done yet. But there should be plenty of foliage through here to go, so they won't say, but also off of those folks right there, 10% discount, don't you see? Right up to that, I'll do it right now.
Any other question? Where is the Hoods Brook coming from?
John?
The Brook that comes out?
I'm not sure where the Hoods Brook is or what it is, but there's a...
They used to ice skate on it back in the day.
What's that place?
They used to ice skate on it back in the day.
Really?
Yes. But it's overgrown, um, but there is...
Well, Perry put pipes underneath the road that go to those other houses, and they come down, and the pipe empties into a field where a lot of it was pocketing all this equipment for the last three or four years. And he had all the stuff over there, and he parked it without paying rent for like three or four years. And that water goes back up to the property, and comes right down on 122, and there's a catch basin, Corrine Reader's house, you know what Corrine Reader is? There's a, a Brook that runs down there and back, and goes into that, there's a catch basin right under this property, and we cleaned all the way down to the catch basin.
I just know that Burns family...
I don't, I don't remember, there used to be, I used to go there when Bill Webster was alive, and they lived in the trailer, and the field was always, always wet, and that's, maybe you could have skated there, I don't know.
No, it was, it was over.
Over for a...
Over this way?
Probably where they have the S's in wetlands, it's over in that area.
Over in that area?
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? It, because it comes off of the, um, the Burns property.
Oh, Burns property?
Burns is up here. That's Burns right there.
Hence Hoods, 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 and Burns there, so.
Well, again, these are all things right there we looked at. Wetland delineation, won't you see that report that's showing exactly whether, did it run out of water, there's any...
Everything, everything over there, Perry disturbed. He, there's a wall on the back of Burns' property, he just took the bulldozer and just pushed through the, just...
You don't need to tell me this story, because I walked it with the family.
And there's, there's a foundation of a house that was never built, and he went bankrupt, and there's a foundation in the ground, right up in the back, right where, I guess you're saying, the Hoods Brook, and I didn't know it had a name, but he, he just destroyed everything over there, piles of dirt, and he'd be pushing, you know, the bulldozer rope, there'd be a big pile of dirt, it was just there. And it was, you know, trees grew out of it, I mean, pickings, brush. And, you know, you can keep going through the woods over there, you find a couple of tires, you find a car door, you find a part of a transmission, you never know what you're going to find. We pulled tons of stuff out, we kept it all so everybody can see, and all the pictures are dated, and the big pile, and I did identify in the picture, it was all green, he pushed all the aluminum on top of it, and that's where, like you see the fifth wheel plate for the truck that was there, that's part of the tractor trailer, the chassis of the truck was in the ground, buried. And you pull it out, there was no motor in it, the, the fifth wheel for the tractor trailer was there, the tires, the rims, you pull all that stuff up, it's in that big pile over there. And we went right down till there's nothing left. And I got pictures on the bottom, and we had, we used an old army truck and loaded all the stuff to get to separate all the dirt, and we went down till there was nothing. And everything is above ground now. Took a lot of time.
I think we're working with the boards that need to be contacted.
Hmm?
I think working with the boards that need to be contacted to move forward, it's going to generate a lot of discussion, and we're going to have to take things as they come.
Yeah.
And, and figure out what we're going to do as a town, and what you need to do, and what you need to do as a company.
Uh, one of the things also is that there's no federal funds asked for, used, no state funds, no local funds, right? This is, the people actually own the property, actually want it and clean it up. All right, is there any pushback at all from the selectmen as far as what we're trying to do here? And the reason why I say that right there, we've got a lot of it on the sites, if we have pushback here, then we need to focus on some other sites as far as engineering resources.
I've already stated, I'm not worried about the project, I'm worried about what the, the condition of the land is.
That's part of the test, yeah.
And that's, that's my concern.
That's why I'm going to bring environmental engineers in as professionals to go over the property, and make a statement, and meet with the, you know, board over here, and everybody can look at their results, and then hire a professional company come in. It's not going to be just like me coming up there, taking a higher engineering company to...
Is it advisable that all flows down to...
It all ends up in a Blackstone River, no matter what. That's where it eventually gets to.
And one of the things also is that...
Even all of the water from Lincoln Street, eventually gets out of the Blackstone River. Right across from where the cement company is, it makes the stairs, there's a manhole over there. And someone illegally tapped into that manhole, it was supposed to be a manhole for rain, but across the street, there used to be a duck pond, where they put that duck pond into that manhole, and now that runs through the center of my property, all the way down, right down to Main Street, and goes into that hole there, into the Blackstone River.
The commonwealth is pretty stringent in stormwater.
Well, you know, they, they did, they did tests years ago, and they poured some dye, and someone's back out on Lincoln Street, across the street from my place, and it came right out into that stormwater. And it isn't supposed to be, and when it's bone-dry outside, there's water running in that manhole. Not going to be well raised, it's only supposed to be there for storm. And it's water that's being piped into from up, through the mill.
Yeah, Mesa 17th, we're actually the new solar builder, it's actually signed into law, right? To, to this particular site, uh, we're going to actually do both sites at the same time. Surveying teams will go out there, survey both, okay? This, that area down through here is fairly clear as far as putting solar. This area up through here is going to be about six months lead time, and John will take, come in, west going east and north going south, and take all that metal off the property, and then prepare it for solar farm. And you'll probably see these two, these two projects, Site A, Site B, going through these committees and these boards about the same time. And it's going to really help, because when they start building these things out, they take the installers, move one site to the next site, right, and just back and forth, and just move these very quickly. These sites, if they're approved, okay, are not going to be built until, by 2017, right? Maybe 2018, a little bit up to 2019. But we have to get all this work done by 2021, and it's, it goes back to what they call investment tax credits. That was approved in the last bill, for the federal local bill, budget bill, and that's only good for five years, so 2016, 17, 18, 19, 20, okay? And that's where our problem is right there, because if they pull that funding, then these large solar farms don't have the money to go and take, put in these, any kind of product pro, pro, projects, then they'll get those taxes sent us. Also, the SREC is going to change over to a, a different program. How much can we actually sell those net maked credits for, okay? Where, where is, you know, economically not feasible to run through all these large sites? So that's what I'm saying, because you can't take these things down the road, okay? Make a decision, and move on. Any other questions?
Do you have a sample of agreement, typical agreement that we could use?
For what?
That we could look at, agreement, you have another community, similar type of construction project.
Uh, yeah, just go over and talk to the folks over at Oxford, the planning board, they've got all the planning as far as the, uh, the two-point server megawatts that's over there on Route, uh...
Right behind the columns, that area there, that's their company.
Yeah, that's it. Land has been filed with them for the longest time, and there's another site that's also a 1.0 megawatt, Clean Energy Collective. And talk to them about the process, yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah, please, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think if it's, uh, okay with the board, you know, bypass the administrative update at this point, if you have any questions, you can, uh, on any of those subjects, you can come back and try to talk to them.
What I'll do is, Mr. Chairman, I might put them on the next agenda, because they're not time-sensitive.
Okay.
In the, like, if we have an executive session after this.
How about the insurance, uh, review?
No, that, that's, that's fine too, that's not anything, uh, that, that's a regular thing, that's different than the vacated debt policy, that's just for the regular case updates, you know, I have to...
So you're looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion, trying to go into executive session, but we've signed minutes with the correction, and we put the...
Okay.
The next meeting.
Next one.
Oh, okay. Yep, we'll sign with the next meeting. Okay, so I may, I move to go into executive session under National Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21, paragraph 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate in which the chair declares in open meeting they have detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, only to exit to adjourn our regular scheduled meeting.
Sir, you're so... Rule?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
Thank you for being able to talk to me, we're just... We usually have that all set.